Welcome everyone to Commissioners Court. Before we get started, we have with us Brother Eric Graham. If you would please lead us in the invocation and Commissioner McCam, the pledges.
Father, we're so thankful for your goodness. We thank you for the quality of life that we have here in Henderson County. We thank you for the leaders that are in position. And we just pray to you, just continue to give you your guidance to them, your wisdom, your discernment. We thank you for the peace officers, public servants that serve here in Henderson County. We pray to you, just protect them, give them great wisdom and discernment. May your blessings be on every household. Well, we thank you for every institution in our community that continues to hold biblical and godly values. Lord, I pray that you just continue to raise them up, bless them, and continue to increase them, and we thank you for it. We thank you again for your goodness. We love you. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Brother Graham, thank you. Well, again, good morning. The time is 9:02. We do have a forum, so we will call this meeting of Commissioners Court to order. Are there any citizens' comments?
Yes, sir.
Item number one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners Court held on April the 23rd, 2024. Further any additions, deletions, or comments?
Here in none, I'd like to make the motion to approve the minutes from the previous Commissioners Court held April 23rd, 2024 as presented with a judge's signature.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spiting, second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the minutes of April the 23rd, 2024 as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Oppose, abstain? Passes four with one abstention. Item number two, consider and take action on request for refund of overpayment of taxes from Henderson County Tax Association Collector.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have four refund checks for court approval totaling $27,944.87.
Court, questions or comments?
I have one question and a reason. On judgment, I see it's in three ninety-two. Does that mean it was done by district court?
Honestly, I have no idea.
All of them in in three ninety-two, so I didn't know if that was a judgment through court or something.
It is through court, but I'm not sure the significance of the three ninety-two.
Any other questions? Entertained a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the overpayment of taxes as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Tulley to approve the refund of overpayment of taxes from the Henderson County Tax Association Collector. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously by those present.
Thank you.
Excuse me, passes unanimously. That was last week. Item number three, consider and take action on interlocal agreement for labor and equipment use with the city of Log Cabin located in Precinct One. Commissioner?
Yes, Court. Since I've been at Precinct One, we've only done one interlocal agreement with the city of Log Cabin, and I was at one of their city council meetings, and we talked about helping them out with some road and drainage issues. So I'm going to do a one-year interlocal agreement with them if it passes today for five thousand labor and equipment use.
Court questions, comments?
I'd like to make the motion to approve a one-year interlocal agreement for labor and equipment use with the city of Log Cabin located in Precinct One with the Commissioner's authorization to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spiting, second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the interlocal agreement with the city of Log Cabin with the Commissioner's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Item number four, consider and take action on an interlocal agreement for labor and equipment use with the city of Seven Points for portions of Veterans Lane and Arnold Hills Road located in Precinct One. Commissioner?
Yes, Court. Same here situation. We've only helped them a couple of times in the last ten years, and there's a couple of roads we were going to try to work out agreement, and it's the same five thousand dollar labor and equipment use for two of the roads. One, both of these roads are also part of, the precinct one has part of these roads, so it'll be a benefit. And they do know they're going to be supplying the material, and I have all the necessary paperwork, the minutes, and they're, the agreement signed by them already.
Questions for the Commissioner? Commissioner, these are joint jurisdictional roads?
Yes, sir. Both of them.
Any further questions? Entertained a motion?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the interlocal agreement with labor and equipment use for the city of Seven Points for portions of Veterans Lane and Arnold Hills Road located in Precinct One with the Commissioner's authorization to sign.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spiting, second by Commissioner Tulley to approve the interlocal agreement for labor and equipment use with the city of Seven Points for portions of Veterans Lane and Arnold Hills Road located in Precinct One with Commissioner's authorization to sign. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you. Item number five is consider and take action on transfer of a 2015 Chevrolet pickup from Fire Marshal's Office to Roden Bridge Precinct Two. Commissioner?
Yes, I visited with our Fire Marshal to see if he had any vehicles available, and so he said he did, so we're just asking to transfer a 2015 Chevrolet pickup.
Fire Marshal?
I don't really have anything to add. It's going to be an extra pickup that we have, we're going to be bringing offline because we purchased a new vehicle.
Court, questions? Hearing none, entertained a motion?
I move that we transfer a 2015 Chevrolet pickup from the Fire Marshal's Office to Roden Bridge Precinct Two.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and second by Commissioner McCam to approve the transfer of the 2015 Chevrolet truck from Fire Marshal's Office to Roden Bridge Precinct Two. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Item number six is consider and take action to tran, action on transfer of a 2010 Ford F-150 from Roden Bridge Precinct Two to the Maintenance Department. Commissioner?
Yes, this is a 2010 Ford F-150 that is, will be, is going to be a great vehicle to update maintenance, and so that's where we're sending it to.
And as far as on the maintenance side, we've been one vehicle down. Sheriff's Office has been gracious enough to loan us one of theirs for several months, and this fills, fills a need without having to go outside and purchase a new one.
That come with a three-year, thirty-six mile, thirty-six thousand mile warranty.
It does, it's in the file.
It has, as is, no warranty on a, on a pickup.
Any questions or comments?
I move that we transfer the 2010 Ford F-150 from Roden Bridge Precinct Two to the Maintenance Department.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the transfer of a 2010 Ford F-150 from Roden Bridge Precinct Two to the Maintenance Department. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Court. Item number seven is consider and take action to accept the resignation of Donna Ward from the Board of Commissioners for Emergency Service District Number Ten located in Precinct Two. Commissioner?
Yes, Ms. Ward has done an outstanding job for ESD Ten there for the Eustace Fire Department, and it's, she's had some kind of health issues, but the backup you'll see was from a text message that she sent me without a computer, so I know ESD Ten is going to miss her. We thank her for her support, but as of right now, she is asking to be step, to step down.
Questions for the Commissioner? Entertained a motion?
Hearing none, Judge. I move we accept the resignation of Donna Ward from the Board of Commissioners of ESD Ten located in Precinct Two.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and second by Commissioner Richardson to accept the resignation of Donna Ward from the Board of Commissioners for Emergency Service District Number Ten located in Precinct Two. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Item eight is consider and take action to appoint Thomas Smith to fill Donna Ward's position for the Board of Commissioners for Emergency Service District Number Ten for a term ending December 31, 2025. Commissioner?
Yes, Mr. Smith has approached my office and also has spoke with the president of ESD Ten, and as you can see in the backup, Mr. Smith looks to, going to be a great asset to them. He is a, in his firefighter, lives in, lives in the district of ESD Ten, and they are, are ready to appoint him to ESD Ten, said he, and they state he will be a great fit to their organization.
Questions for the Commissioner? Entertained a motion?
I move that we appoint Thomas Smith to fill Donna Ward's position on the Board of Commissioners of ESD Ten for a term ending December the 31st, 2025, located in Precinct Two.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and second by Commissioner McCam to appoint Thomas Smith to fill the unexpired term on the Board of Commissioners for Emergency Service District Number Ten for a term ending December 31, 2025. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
Item number nine is receive financial reports, of which we have none. Item number ten is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheet. We do not have any today. Item eleven is consider and take action on submitted contracts, of which there are none. Item twelve is consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits. Commissioner?
Yes, this is a right-of-way activity from East Cedar Creek Freshwater. It was a two-inch water main that broke. It was an emergency situation located at 141 Arrowhead Way. And the, the field supervisor just before court sent me a, a drawing, so it will be in the backup. It's not in, in your backup today, but the judge has it posted.
Questions for the Commissioner? Entertained a motion?
I move that we approve the utility line activity for East Cedar Creek Freshwater District to replace a two-inch water main in the right-of-way of 141 Arrowhead Way located in Precinct Two with the Commissioner's authorization to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the right-of-way agreement with East Cedar Creek Freshwater Supply District for repair to a two-inch water main located at 141 Arrowhead Drive, I believe that is in it, Drive? With the Commissioner's authorization to sign.
Arrowhead Way.
Arrowhead Way, excuse me. Arrowhead Way with the Commissioner's authorization to sign. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Item thirteen, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. Ms. Monk?
Yeah, we do have those today. This is just moving this line as in the property department.
Questions, Court? Hearing none, entertained a motion?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the budget amendments as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spiting, second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the budget amendments as presented. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Item fourteen is consider and take action on payment of bills. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, sir. We have fiscal year 2024 in the amount of $377,853.58.
Commissioner Spiting?
There was one journal entry that Ms. Carpenter and I found that she fixed. That's all we have.
Commissioner Tulley?
I have none.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
Entertained a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 bills in the amount of $377,853.58 as presented with a journal entry.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Spiting to approve the 2024 bills in the amount of $377,853.58 as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Item fifteen, consider and take action on submitted flats.
We have two flats, these are tucked away in Precinct One and Precinct Three.
Commissioner Spiting?
Pass on mine until next week.
Okay. Another one, Commissioner McCam?
I have one. It's a replat of Lot 312 and 313 of Waters Edge Ranch Phase Three, creating Lot 312-R of Waters Edge Ranch Phase Three. They're just taking one lot, uh, two lots and making one lot.
Questions for the Commissioner? Entertained a motion?
I move that we approve the replat of Lot 312 and 313 of Waters Edge Ranch Phase Three, creating Lot 312-R of Waters Edge Ranch Phase Three. With, huh?
Filing purposes.
For filing purposes only.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the replat in Waters Edge Ranch Phase Three of Lots 312 and 313, creating the Lot 312-R for filing purposes only. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Item sixteen, open and consider bids. Looks like we got a couple of them today.
Good morning. Have two bid packets this morning. First one is for fiscal year 2024, invitation for bid for road materials. If approved this morning, the proposed date I have is the first ad Saturday, this Saturday, May 4th. I'm the second ad next Saturday, May 11th. Open the bid Tuesday, May 21st, and bring it back to court for award the ne, the following Tuesday, May 28th.
Court, questions, comments?
Teddy, I know we talk about this all, all the time up here on the court, but do we, do we see it that, how we get back to January or yearly deal, or do we just keep on trucking?
Are you, are you asking the effective dates of this invitation?
Well, I would say, I mean, it's fine. It's just that, that we've pushed it so much that our bids are in the middle of the year.
Yeah, we could.
We don't, we don't really want all the bids to fall at one time. That would be impossible for our office to manage.
Well, my deal is, is that we're, I mean, as long as we stay on top of it, like, I mean, I guess it was last year, 2022, when we didn't, we had problems getting material or whatever because of our bid.
Right. It's changing the, the bid dates won't affect that. Those, those issues can happen anytime during the year, but for us to try and align them all at the same time in January is almost impossible. I mean, we have to, it's a lot of work to do a bid, and if you want to align them all up to hit it one time at the first of the year, we don't have the personnel to do that. It's a lot to put these bids together and get the information back from the various departments, and even that, we weren't getting the information from y'all to get it, so that's one of the reasons it got pushed back. So that could happen at any time, but we do have it on our file when they come up and we're more aware of it.
I mean, that's fine, and just, we, we're stuck there for two or three months of one year not getting our, we had a problem with getting, getting material. Now, they, the companies went ahead and honored the bid to get us through the.
Right. That had nothing to do with whether we did it in January or in March or any other month.
Okay.
I think one time it got pushed back because we didn't accept the bid because there wasn't enough people that bid, a lot, a lot of them didn't bid on material, and we had to go out for rebid for everybody on there, on, or certain items, I think. But I know if, if we did have it where it was a January first deal, that's another reason you go out for bid. If you go out in December, a lot of them around the holiday time, some of them don't care, care of business too. Some of the smaller, smaller companies and stuff gone and don't get bids in.
Yeah, that one year we had the problem was just a kind of a storm. We had, we, we didn't accept any bids, and that put us a month and a half behind, and then we had some illnesses, and that put us a month behind, and then, I mean, we just got behind on that year, like you said, for about two months in there, but they did honor them, so we were okay. But my only problem with it is, do these companies want to make the bid for six months and then have to rebid again?
Well, I, I mean, it's, that's the deal, it's six months, and then you have to turn around and do it again, or do it for eighteen months, and they don't want to do it for eighteen months because their prices are going to change within that, and they don't know that they have that option in there to increase their.
But as long as we, and, and this is, everything you got on here is perfect.
Yeah.
So if we keep it like this and just keep on track, you know, we should be okay.
Unless we don't get enough responses.
Yes. And then you froze it off again.
One thing that I think that we haven't put in here that just came to mind is, we had talked about it, putting out who we were going to send all these bids to.
Yeah, I do have a list, and I can provide that to you after court. Yeah, I don't have it with me, but it should be the same list. I, I've had a couple of people contact me, so there's some additions, but it should be the same list of who's received it last year. One or two changes, but it's additions, no deletions to vendors that I'm aware of.
Any other discussion concerning the road materials bid? It appears that the next bid you're going to run on the same deal. If we want to, we can move to that one and then do a motion for both of them since they'll run at the same time?
Yeah, I also have the haul and transport, transport bid, and I have the same dates on it, and these two do usually run together.
Questions? There's no discussion on hauling and transporting?
I have none. Teddy, thanks for what you've done to keep us in line and, and all the hard work you do behind the scenes to, to get this stuff to court. So Judge, without any further questions, I move that we set a proposed date for the first ad on Saturday, May 4th, 2024, Saturday, the second ad, Saturday, May 11th, 2024. Open the bids on May 21st, 2024, and award on Tuesday, May 28th, 2024, for hauling, transport, and road material.
I'll second the motion.
Kept motion by Commissioner Tulley and second by Commissioner Richardson to, if, if. With your leave to modify that.
Invitation for bids.
Have a, have a motion by Commissioner Tulley and by, a second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the invitations for bid for hauling, transport, and road material as presented.
Second.
If y'all are good with, with that. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you, sir, and thank you, Commissioner. Item seventeen, consider and take action to adjourn.
So move. I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner McCam to adjourn at 9:24. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you for being with us.